Okay, six o'clock, ready to roll. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Temecula Planning Commission. Good to see everybody in the audience tonight. Welcome. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And for us to do that, we're going to do the flag salute after. We'll do it, we call the order, so we call the order. Commissioner Turley Trejo, would you please lead us in a flag salute?
All right, please join, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Trejo. For our roll call, we're going to, thank you very much. Do the roll call. We're going to have a new member of the planning commission sworn in tonight. So we'll do that first, right now, before we do the roll call.
That's actually perfect. Soon-to-be Commissioner Solis, would you like to come down and join me at the podium? And we'll go ahead and get you sworn in. And that way, you will be official when the roll call is taken. I see that your family is here. Did you want to introduce them?
Oh, sure, okay. So I have my wife, my wife is here, my mother-in-law and father-in-law, my dad, my cousin, my aunt, my sister, and a very good friend.
Well, welcome, family. We're glad you're here. So if you want to go ahead and reach your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Fernando Solis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly surrender firm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution, I mean, sorry, and the.
Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which, about to enter.
Congratulations, Commissioner Solis.
Thank you.
And if you also take your seat.
If, if, if you'd like to take a few pictures, feel free. Take, take a minute or so to do that. Since you have your family here.
I could take your pictures where you want. Did you want to take a family picture? Camera, camera, you guys want? Thank you so much for letting us take this picture.
Not a, not a problem, take your time.
Aww.
She made a point.
That's nice. Aww. Wow, I didn't know they could have banners like that. That's cool.
The last time I got a banner, I was gone for a year.
Congratulations.
I'm sure that Fernando's told you that our meetings routinely take five to six hours, and he'll be here all the time.
We're not gonna be here for this.
Very good, welcome aboard, and let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioners Hagel.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Vice Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
And Chair Watts.
Thank you. Public comment. I do have one quick comment on the public comment. I had a question that someone had sent in an email on item and didn't hear it. And I did have a chance to talk with our director over here. And it's my understanding, the standard procedure is that any email or written comments that come in on a subject are part of the record, even if they haven't been read out loud. So for, for the person who asked me that question, if you're watching, that's, that's the answer. We did get your comments, and they have been included in the record. And that will be the case in any future matter as well. So with that, do we have any members of the public that want to speak tonight on public comment?
We have received none.
Very good. I will skip the admonition on that and go to the consent cali- calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to theplanningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And just to make sure, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar items tonight?
We have none.
Very good. So tonight on our consent calendar, we have item number one, approved the meeting minutes of October 27th, 2022, and December 7th, 2022. And those, both of those meetings can be handled with one motion, I believe.
I, so move.
I'll second.
Motion's moved by Commissioner Turley Trejo and seconded by Commissioner Hagel. All those in favor? Aye.
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 And I believe, any opposed? I believe that's a five to zero vote.
It's actually four, zeroed, abstention by Commissioner Solis.
Okay. We're good with that, then, and we move on to business for the evening. Members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Do we have any speakers on these, these next three items tonight? We have none.
Yes, none.
We will move to item number two, selection of chair and vice chair of the commission for 2023 calendar year. And I would like to use my prerogative as chair to nominate Commissioner Turley Trejo to be the chair for our 2023 calendar year. Does anybody care to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is made by Chair Watts and seconded by Commissioner Ruiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe I heard everybody say aye. So that's a five to zero vote. Congratulations, you are our new chair. I will move and take your seat. I love it when a plan comes together.
All right. Well, I don't know if this is the time, but I really want to thank Gary for what a great job he's done this last, really, actually, year and, year and a half as our chair. So he's been stellar in that position, and gonna be some hard boots to follow there, and cowboy hat. So, anyway, I want to thank you, Gary, for all you've done and, and done a great job here for us in the commission.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to the rest of the commission for putting up with me and making our commission a success. I think we function well, and I appreciate all your cooperation and participation in that effort.
And we're all so excited to have our, have a full commission here. We haven't had that for a little bit, so we're excited to have you here, Commissioner Solis. And great, I was telling Gary that I only had my husband here when I was put in, and Gary said, I didn't have anybody, so. So, anyway, it's great to see support. And so, we're glad to have you. And if you have any questions, you know, that's what we're here for. It's not, I had a lot of questions when I first came on and wasn't sure about things, so I'm sure Luke will be a great resource to you, and Marisela, and, and all of us, too. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so we'll move to number three.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we still have the vice chair to vote on.
Oh, wow, okay, see, already. Okay, so.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to make a recommendation and motion that Commissioner Hagel serve as vice chair.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by.
Adam.
Adam. Wow, I was gonna say Mr. Ruiz, but that was weird. Okay, we have, okay, we have a motion by Adam and a second by Gary for Vice Chair, Bob Hagel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, all right, I think that, did you say aye? Okay. That's a five-zero.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else I need to do on number two? We're good? Okay, all right. So congratulations, Bob. All right, be my right hand, my wingman. All right, so number three, receive presentation on final draft of 2022 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan prepared by Mike Alfred. So we're glad to have you here tonight. We'll go ahead and turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, fellow commissioners and staff. My name's Mike Alfred, I'm the city's emergency manager. And this evening, I'm gonna give you a presentation on the update to our 2022 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Can we get the presentation on screen, please? Or is, do I gotta do something here? I don't know. I can't see it on this. Oh, there we go. Oh, well, if I do that, then it'll work. Okay, there we go. Just to provide some quick background, with regards to Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires that all local governments have an approved and adopted hazard mitigation plan. This plan is actually required for post-disaster funding and helps us describe our processes for assessing hazards, risks, and vulnerabilities while identifying and prioritizing mitigation actions and soliciting input from our community. This plan must be updated every five years to stay current, so that way, we can continue to receive hazard mitigation funding both pre and post-disaster. FEMA defines mitigation as an effort to reduce or eliminate the loss of life and property by lessening the impacts of hazards. The benefits of having a hazard mitigation plan are that it saves lives. It helps us with reducing damage to civilian property, minimizing social disruption, economic loss, and it also gives our community a shorter recovery period. The city's last plan was updated and approved in 2017. And in 2017, our top five hazards were listed as transportation emergencies, earthquakes, floods, terrorism, and wildland fires. Between 2012 and 2017, there have been no changes in our hazards. There haven't been any that have been added, and there've been none that have been taken out as well. And to, of note, there have been no repetitive loss properties under the National Flood Insurance Program. So our goal for 2022 was pretty simple. What we wanted to do was develop a strategy that was to reduce or eliminate impacts from hazards. The objectives that we applied were a comprehensive planning approach, where we involved the whole community, both local and regional stakeholders. Our planning team consisted of about fifty-two members, both from city staff, local jurisdictions that surround us, where we have impacts and hazards that kind of overlap, as well as stakeholders from within the community. We utilized an all-hazards approach, and we engaged the public as much as we possibly could through social media, printed media, and public meetings. We wanted to understand the capabilities and our vulnerabilities to hazards, so we went through an exhaustive search to make sure that we could complete and identify a good key assets matrix to determine what different infrastructure types within the city would be pertinent to these disasters. And then, we would turn around and identify projects and actions that we could do and implement as a city under our hazard mitigation planning team over the next five years to help eliminate or reduce the effects of some of these hazards. This picture here depicts the actual cycle that we went through for the update to this plan. The process typically takes about eighteen months, but with COVID and everything else, it kind of got pushed a little bit to the side by county EMD, because we fall under Riverside County for their multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. The City of Temecula's plan is an annex to theirs, so we were involved quite heavily in their planning process. Currently, we are in phase three, which is the finalization of the plan. Currently, the plan sits at Cal OES for review. It has been up there once already, where we got some very nominal feedback that was really just making sure that we had all of our Ts crossed, our Is dotted, and that we didn't leave anything out. So we went ahead and we made those requisite changes. We sent the plan back to Cal OES for approval, and it's still sitting there. I haven't heard anything back to date. One of the things that we did do within this planning cycle was we streamlined the plan. This is my first attempt at writing a local hazard mitigation plan, simply because my background has been predominantly healthcare emergency management, so working for a local jurisdiction. While everything is still the same, some of the processes are different. So we streamlined this plan into eight different chapters. We provided an introduction, and then, we hit very well on our planning process. We built an extensive community profile. We assessed the city's capabilities and what we can do as a jurisdiction to help mitigate these hazards. We did a complete assessment of all of the hazards that are pertinent to our community. We did a risk and vulnerability assessment, developed mitigation strategies, actions, and projects. And then, we finished it up with a plan administration chapter that shows how we're gonna continue to maintain this process. Under our capability assessment, this is where we identify what the city has. So our resource availability as a city that supports mitigation. Under personnel, we looked at workforce, our contracts and contractors, volunteers, mutual aid, and different partnerships that we currently have. Under our governance resources, we looked at laws, regulations, codes, and ordinances, as well as plan studies, reports, and programs that we, as a city, have that would lead to mitigation efforts. We looked at our technical resources that we have available, as well as our fiscal resources. And those fiscal resources are looked at heavily, because when FEMA looks at a city's plan, they want to look at your projects, look at your governance, and then, see, are these some of the things that they're gonna be able to do on their own with regular general funds? Or are they gonna need to apply for hazard mitigation funding? Or are they gonna have repetitive loss properties that mean we're gonna have to go back and continually give this community funding, which is something that they're not really big on doing? If you have the ability to mitigate, they want you to be able to mitigate that so that they don't have to continue to provide funding down the road for disasters. During our hazard assessment, we went through an extensive effort to identify everything that was hazardous in our area. We used external resources, such as the state's hazard mitigation plan, the county's operational area local hazard mitigation plan, as well as some of our surrounding jurisdictions, to make sure that we weren't off-base in choosing or selecting hazards that are not outlined anywhere else in any other plan. So what we did then was, after we identified those hazards, we developed a comprehensive profile for each one of those. Just to re, to, to rehash this, in 2017, we had transportation, earthquake, flood, terrorism, and wildfire. You will still find those same top five hazards in our 2022 hazards. However, based on recent events and historical data on, on events that have happened over the last five years, the top five has been reorganized while still keeping transportation failures our number-one priority. But wildfires, most recently, are effects from the Fairview Fire, and what that caused for the community has moved that back up, as well as putting electrical failures or public safety power shut-offs in the top five. During our hazard assessment, we made sure that we prioritize the process for each one of the identified hazards, and we used a non-numerical ranking system. And this system was based on probability and impact. And under probability, as well as impact, we went by high, medium, and low in order for us to determine, is it high likely, or is it not? Is it catastrophic, or is it negligible? And how that is gonna pertain to each individual hazard. By doing so, we were able to develop this matrix that told us these are the top hazards in each of these areas. You'll notice that they're not numbered, because what we did then was, we took everything that was in gray, which is considered to be our top hazards. And then, we had the committee, or the hazard mitigation planning team, go back, and we had a discussion over the period of a couple of hours where we determined which one was going to be number one and which one was going to be number ten. The profile composition for each one of our hazards, it gives a ranking, a description of the hazard, the location and extent of these hazards and their effects on the community, historical documentation on the effects, what the probability is. And one of the new requirements being placed into the plan is the climate change considerations that these hazards will also have on the community. We then conducted a risk and vulnerability assessment. And risk is defined by FEMA as a combination of hazard, vulnerability, and exposure. It's the impact that a hazard would have on our community, our services, our facilities and structures in the community, and the likelihood that this event would result in an adverse condition. We looked at our disaster proclamation history, going back all the way to 1993. And since then, we have only had three events that have necessitated the need for a disaster declaration. That was the flooding events we had in 1993, as well as '07. We had a high-wind event in 2007, and then, the COVID emergency, where we had declarations through all of 2020 and 2021. As part of the vulnerability assessment, we rated each one of our hazards utilizing a calculated priority risk index, which examines four different criteria. What is the probability, the magnitude and severity of that issue? What warning time do we have? And the duration of the incident itself. And we were able to tie it back to our original hazard prioritization. So on this depiction here, on this graphic, you'll see that we have earthquake all the way down to hazmat. And each one of those was given a probability, severity, and warning time ranking. In doing so, we've got all high priority, with only two that are a moderate priority, which would be our floods and our extreme heat. Additionally, we identified all of the critical facilities and assets within the city that encompass both cultural and natural resource inventories. We also looked at different items that would be of benefit to the community. So even though it's not considered a critical infrastructure item for the city, such as the city hall, the facility operations center, TVE2, or even the community rec center, we looked at churches, we looked at parks, we looked at hospitals, we also looked at our communications nodes across the city, our five different transformer stations for power. So there's a lot of other items that are considered critical infrastructure that the city doesn't own, but they're also considered an item that is crucial to the community's ability to continue on and become part of the recovery process. So in doing so, we did a risk assessment and potential loss, where we evaluated city-owned property, as well as the population in those areas that were exposed to hazards. So what we did with these is we put all of the different critical infrastructure items on a map. Our GIS department did a great job of helping us with that. And then, what they would do is for each one of the hazards, they would do an overlay. So let's say for earthquakes, where are our faults at, as well as the fault zone? And by doing so, we were able to identify specifically what critical infrastructure or city-owned facility was in there. And that was able to help us determine how many critical facilities would be exposed during an earthquake. Estimated loss of twenty-five percent, and we were able to come up with our replacement value, the content value, and the content value was developed utilizing insurance rates, where they reimburse at forty percent of the value of the facility. And then, we have an estimated replacement loss. So by doing so, we can see that there's a substantial amount of money that could be saved by increasing our mitigation actions as they pertain to earthquakes and some of the different hazards here. So our goals for the 2022 to 2027 mitigation plan was to minimize the loss of life and injuries. We want to improve our community and agency awareness. We want to improve the community's capability to mitigate the hazards and reduce exposure to hazard-related losses. We also want to reduce our hazard-related property loss, maintain coordination for disaster planning, and integrated public policy, and improve our emergency management capability. From the 2017 plan to this plan, there were two changes in our goals. And in 2022, we updated one from 2017. We added one new goal, and then, we removed two from the old plan. Our mitigation actions and projects for this plan, back in 2017, we had a few of them that were listed up there, but some of these projects have already since been completed. So what we did is we went ahead and we removed those projects, since they have been. And then, we kept three, two other projects, so that we could continue to expand on that and see if we could get those projects completed. But in discussion with our group and the stakeholders from the community, we were able to determine that we needed some new projects that were more specific to the hazards that we identified. One of those being a citywide mass evacuation plan. Currently, the City of Temecula does not have one. If we were to have a major catastrophic wildfire, and we are surrounded on three sides by a wildland urban interface, we have no real method of moving large quantities of people in and out of the city. Because where we are at, the 15 freeway is huge congestion. Our frontage roads are not capable of handling the mass numbers of traffic. So we need to create a very intriguing plan that has multiple little moving parts in order to get people to move across the city, as opposed to trying to leave the city. Additionally, one of the other projects that we decided on, it was as a necessity for flood hazards, is placing what they call giant voice speakers all the way down the Temecula Creek from city limits, out on Highway 79, into old, and through Old Town, so that way, we can notify the residents in the area of any impending major flooding that could happen. If for some reason, the Vale Lake Dam was to breach, that release of water will hit city limits in eighteen minutes. By the time we find out, we have the ability to activate our command center, and we start sending out mass warning messages, it's too late. We have the ability, when that happens, then, it would automatically trigger a notice that would go straight to those speakers, and it would start pushing people up and away from the Temecula. that would go straight to those speakers, and it would start pushing people up and away from the Temecula Creek. Additionally, we wanted to look at wildland vegetation management, considering everything that surrounds the city. So we added that as another project and plan on using hazard mitigation funding to support that effort. Additionally, we listed 28 proposed mitigation actions. Not just projects, but these are actions that will be taken care of by different staff sections as well as the Office of Emergency Management. This is a continuous living process. And this is also one that will be verified and validated at the end of every year when we get the team back together to review this plan and see where we are at. Some of these items here, such as coordinating with our school district emergency management, especially when it comes to active assailants, and God forbid, something happened and we need to do family reunification, or we need to possibly assist the school district with relocating a high school and splitting those amongst two other schools if you can't go back to the school. So those are just some examples of some of the different actions that we plan to take. This list only covers 17, but there are 11 more to total the 28. For awareness, we had great social media representation from multiple different partners across the community. From the Chamber of Commerce to the District Three Supervisor Washington's office, the city, community services. We had all of these different things put out to get people to be aware of the fact that we were conducting a hazard mitigation plan update as well as get the community to take our 15-minute survey to answer some questions, and then also to provide us some feedback on some things that they would want us to look at. Out of the total third, what is it, three and a half months that we did the public survey, we had 226 of our residents actually submit some information back to us that has given us something to look forward to over the next several years. But we did highlight this, and now this is the third public meeting. We did our preparedness fair in November, and then we did social media as well as public survey and comments. The city's plan was also posted on the Office of Emergency Management's website along with a community survey. And our public comment period, excuse me. The comment period for this plan, once it was completed, was from December 1st to December 30th. And during that 30-day timeframe, the Office of Emergency Management did not receive any comments from the public on the plan itself. So our next steps, because of the fact that we got done with the plan early, we went ahead and we've submitted it already. But the plan was to have it in the County of Riverside's hands by February 1st. From February to March, or basically now until March, Cal OES and FEMA are going to simultaneously review our plan. They have a minimum of 45 days to look at that and then get us comments or recommended changes, answer any questions that they may have that we can go back and forth with them on, and then receive an approval letter from FEMA. Once we receive that approval letter, we will then turn around and schedule the plan for adoption by the city council, make it official by resolution, put in the plan in force for the next five years. Barring any questions, that concludes my presentation for the evening.
Thank you so much. Is it Mikhail?
It's Michael.
Michael, okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I'll start with questions on the side. Adam?
Yeah, thank you. Very thorough report, and nice to see that so much thought's being put into some of these. Couple of questions. When you talked about the loudspeaker along the flood control there, it made me think of, the city currently has text alerts for an emergency situation, correct?
That's correct.
Can those alerts be targeted also? I mean, if there's someone that's hard of hearing or other noise going on and they can't hear those speakers, is there another way that we can do that? And also thinking of other areas throughout the city, are those text alert notifications able to be targeted to certain communities?
Yes, sir. The current system that we have enables us to completely geofence or target any specific region within the city. We can do the entire city, we can do just a specific HOA, or we can do an entire length of street if you wanted to, like during the rains. We were targeting the flood and creek beds for the homeless. So we have the ability to target that. Any number, email address that is registered in our system, we can send them multiple alerts. So they can get a phone call, they can get a text message, they can get an email as well.
Great. And then my other, only other question, is our CERT program part of this? Does that fall in line with this type of plan, I guess, if that's the right word?
Yes, sir. Our CERT team, well, actually, the CERT team is not a component of this. Our CERT training program is, because that's a mitigation action that we continue to work with that provides our community members with a method for being disaster-ready and disaster-resilient by teaching them what they need to know to protect themselves, their families, their neighbors, and then expand to the community. So the CERT training program is part of our mitigation actions, but not the actual Temecula Citizen Corps by itself.
Got it. And I think, I did that years ago, and I think it's a fantastic program. Curious, do you know how ours compares to other cities or other, you know, maybe, you know, towns or counties?
I was a member of the Temecula Citizen Corps for 10 years before I took this job. I had to step back from that because it's a conflict of interest because now I partially oversee that program. But I'm somewhat biased, but at the same time, our Citizen Corps is by far the best in the county. We are the only CERT team that teaches their own CERT courses. We do not require grant funding, we do not require support from the County of Riverside, and we don't do instructors from outside the area. Our CERT members have gone through the respective training, the different programs to make them instructors, as well as, some of them are program managers. So we have quite a self-sufficient CERT program.
Yeah, I think it's great, and I would just encourage, you know, can you get that word out? I think the more, the more, you know, residents that come into the area, you know, that they've done it, maybe it's time to redo it again or revisit it. I mean, I know I could probably use a refresher from the time I did it as well, but I think it's awesome that we have that, so.
We currently hold four classes a year now. We do two classes for adults and two classes for teens.
Awesome.
But then now we're also working on doing some real heavy advertising for them to try and see if we can get more of the community to participate in these actions.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yes, I was one of the early CERT team leaders and got to participate in some of our disasters that we have had. I don't know if you remember, we did have a tornado here back in, I think it was around, somewhere around 2005. A tornado went through Rainbow Canyon and did a fair amount of damage. That was, I've lived in California for 35 years, and that was my third tornado, believe it or not. So that is something that can happen here, but I'm, you know, sure it's not, hopefully not real frequent.
I hope it's not frequent.
Yeah.
But I do know that that hazard is actually reflected in the annex.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things that, when we went to purchase the streetlights from Edison, I remember a conversation regarding a capability that we might be able to have, and I think it would be software-driven, that we can use the streetlights to guide cars. So if there was, the road was shut down because of a traffic accident, you can use your streetlights lighting one after another in some kind of rotation to guide cars around, which could also be used in any kind of an emergency. And I don't know if that was something that came up or was thought about. I don't know if we actually have that capability. Again, I'm pretty sure it's software-driven, so whether we had that in our software or not, but that would be something that's certainly possible.
That's something that we can look into, sir. I know it wasn't mentioned, and it definitely was not brought up by our SoCal Edison rep that was part of the team.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I believe we actually, well, we own the lights now, and I believe that we have the software here that actually controls them, but I'm not sure about that. But that might be something you can look into. Pachanga. Have we worked with Pachanga in developing this plan? Or do we work with Pachanga in any other way? If, one is if there was a disaster on, at the casino, it would have a great impact on our city, particularly the south side of the city, particularly traffic-wise. Also, their facility is a very large facility and a great facility to be used as a shelter if necessary. I know we helped open a shelter there during the wildfires back, I think it was like 2007 or somewhere around there. And they didn't have the capability to manage it, so our CERT team managed it. And, but since then, they're now twice the, twice the size. So there is a lot of, a lot of capability there for sheltering.
Yes, sir. Actually, the Pachanga Casino is now a Red Cross nationally-recognized shelter. I do have a good working relationship with their emergency manager, and he was included in this process. But as a tribal government, they are also doing a plan just like this for themselves. So we did work together in putting our hazards together and looking at where we can and can't help each other out.
Right, good. Okay. I think that's it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, Fernando?
I'd just like to say it was a great presentation, very informative.
Thanks, sir.
If I have any questions, I'll be sure to reach out to you. Thank you.
Fantastic project, and I'm sure you were pretty busy getting all that accomplished. So thank you for that, and also thank all the firefighters and police for the first responder efforts every day that this city receives from all of you folks. We appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for, you know, it's overwhelming, that's like even reading it, right? And we didn't do anything to put it together. So I had a couple of questions. I appreciate the questions from my colleagues. Why in 2017 was terrorism one of the five hazards?
Ma'am, I do not know the rationale behind that. I was not employed here in 2017, and those that oversaw the drafting of that plan also no longer work here. So I wasn't able to get any, any context of why those hazards were placed in the order that they were.
I was just curious. Yeah, I was just curious about that. Okay. Maybe, you know, if you, if somebody can find that out for me, I'd love to know the answer to that. And I also really, is there a problem? Okay. Oh, okay. I'm so glad you talked about evacuation. Like, that is my hugest concern about our city, and I think a lot of people, obviously. So I would love to have updates on that, on what that plan is, how it's shaping up. Because I think that's one of our biggest issues in our city. So it's interesting what you said about moving across the city instead of trying to get out of the city. So I think, Luke, it would be great to have some updates on that because I have people asking me all the time, like, how are we going to get out? Something happens. We can't even get out when nothing happens. No, so anyway.
We've already done some research on that, ma'am, and utilizing some benchmark plans and ideas from some other communities that are densely impacted like we are. They have the hazard areas broken down into zones. So let's say we have a fire that's coming into the city from Deluge. We would then take these areas along this side around Pujo Street and so forth, and take them and push them all the way out across the 15 into the other areas of the city. If it's on the south end, we would push them north. And if it was on the east end, we would send them west. We just have to figure out how do we identify those zones and put that all together to make sure that it works. But it seems to be, as when we discussed this before with the planning team, that was the biggest thing that they brought to light was trying to move them across the city as opposed to trying to get them on the freeway to get them out.
Right, right. Okay. Gary has a question.
I'm sorry, it just occurred to me, though. When this plan was developed five years ago, was it?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure the nuclear power plant at San Onofre was considered quite a bit of a risk. And has that changed and lowered quite a bit now that it's been, I think, decommissioned?
Yes, sir. It has been decommissioned, and it has lowered our risk. It just has not eliminated it. From the, we are still within the 50-mile hazard zone if for some reason something negative was to happen. But the spent fuel and the rods are currently housed in concrete casks. So it would take something rather large to release that nuclear waste in order to cause a problem for us here.
Great, thank you. I'm.
All right. Any other questions? Nope, we're good. Thank you so much. Great presentation and so much information, and it helps us because when, you know, we're representing the community and we can answer some questions that way. So thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
So we're on to number four, selection of planning commission subcommittees. So.
So, yeah, just really quick, Madam Chair, there are two items, 4.1 and 4.2, before you guys tonight. 4.1 is some existing subcommittees. And then you can see on the right of the agenda, the current members. And then 4.2 would be the new committees that we would like to form based on the limited-term projects that we have coming up in the foreseeable future. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, and you guys can decide who's going to be on the committees.
Okay, well, would you mind giving a brief description of the three new ones?
Yes. Butterfield, Temecula, and that should say Butterfield-Temecula Parkway Subcommittee. This deals with potential development near the Big Horse Feed Store. There are, there's a lot of vacant property over there, as you guys are very well aware. We have a proposal for a project there, and it would be to discuss that project moving forward until it's time to come up for approval here at the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Hospital Subcommittee, self-explanatory, that's for the hospital.
But what specifically for the hospital?
They have a, they have an application in for some changes.
Right.
So we would be meeting on that. And the Seraphina Subcommittee, there is a, off of Nicholas Road. So you go up Winchester, take a right on Nicholas, you go out. Prior to getting to where Nicholas Road jogs to the right, there's a large, on the left-hand side, the north side of Nicholas, there's a large vacant piece of property there before you get to Nicholas Valley.
Is that by the blueberry farm?
No, so think Winchester, take a right. So Winchester right by the high school. And then take a right on Nicholas. And you go out past the housing tracks there when it starts to get rural.
Right.
Right when it starts to get rural, on the north side of the road, there's a big vacant piece of property there. And we have a proposal for a residential development there, and that's what the Subcommittee would be dealing with.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. So, all right, so I know we also have our Subcommittee assignments here on a big, long page of all of them, too. So I think, I know that Gary and I have been on a lot of them just because we had, we needed to. So we could, you know, maybe make a few changes there. But, so let's go ahead and start with the ones that are listed here on the agenda. So let's start with the Promenade Mall. Is there anyone that would like to join Bob on that Subcommittee? Going once? You're on it. I know, I'm not looking at you. Okay, well, we'll come back to that. Okay, on all terrors, anyone who?
You know, Madam Chair, what might help, at least for me, is a couple of these subcommittees that I'm on currently have met fairly regularly, some have not met at all. Luke, is there, is there any kind of anticipation, like, hey, some of these vacancies or the new ones would be kind of a monthly commitment or maybe a couple of times a year? That I think would help, it would help me at least. Yeah, I think it's going to be dependent on the Subcommittee. So if you want to go through, we can talk about each one on the, on the agenda, and I can, I can do that if you would like. if you would like.
You wanna do that, on each one of them?
That would help me.
Or just, at least on the vacancy, maybe, if we're, the ones you're trying to fill there, Madam Chair?
I mean, honestly, Adam, I've been being on here as long as I have been, most of them are not really time-consuming, really, for the most part, unless, unless we're working on that project and that.
Generally speaking, they're not time-consuming.
Right.
They meet very frequently, all of them. It's really just when something changes in the status of an application, or if it's getting ready to come to the planning commission. Other than that, it's really a limited-time commitment for most of them.
And I, you know, the way I kinda look at it is, if something strikes you, you're interested in it, grab it, you know, or try to grab it, unless somebody's already on it. If it's something you're really not interested in at all, you know, it's, so, I mean, we should all be interested in all of it, right? But I'm just kinda putting that out there.
More interested.
More interested, that's a good way to put it. So, all right, so let's, let's move down, is that okay, Adam?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move, so, having said that, let's go back to Promenade. Would anyone like to join the Promenade Subcommittee with Bob? Sure? Okay. I'm looking at the newbie.
Sure.
Because you're gonna get some of these, I'm just saying. Okay, so we have Commissioner Solis on the Promenade Mall with Bob Hegel, whoever's taking notes over there, right?
Sure.
Somebody got it over there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Altair.
I would, I would be interested in that primarily because I've got tons of experience with wildland urban interface with my previous job, and I don't wanna be on all of these things, so if anyone's interested in taking one of my slots, I'll probably be more than willing to give that up, but that would be my particular request on this.
Awesome. Yes, so Watts on the Altair Project. I would like to be on the Truax Hotel Subcommittee, unless somebody else is really wanting that. Are we good? I would also like to be on the Town Square, unless somebody is wanting to do that. I know, I'm giving myself more, but, and then on the Housing Subcommittee, what is that gonna entail, since we've been, just because we've been working a lot on the housing element, is that what that, or what?
That's, that's what that was, is the housing element, and honestly, the housing element was just certified.
Right.
Very, very recently, so we probably should have just stricken that one from the list.
Can we take that one off, then?
It's, yeah, it's up to you guys.
Can I just say, we're gonna take it off? Do I have that power?
Sure.
Okay, awesome. I like having a little power, it's kind of, okay. All right, now we're at the Butterfield-Temecula Parkway. I, I would be interested in that. Anybody else interested in that?
I'll be interested.
Or were you?
I'll go.
Were you wanting that?
No, no, let, let Commissioner Solis jump on.
All right. Okay. I'm also interested in the hospital.
So am I, too.
Oh, okay. All right.
But that's fine.
You guys bound it up.
Well, let's see. Hmm, okay, we'll come back to that. Sarafina.
So question on Sarafina, I live in that area, am I precluded then from, how far away do I need, I mean, that's my general living area, so...
I would just suggest, if you live in the area, perhaps let someone else try for that one.
Is, is that right across from the Edison Substation, is that big, flat area there?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, I'm already on a lot of them, but I, I'll, it'll step up if that helps.
It does help. We'll take you off some of the other ones. Okay.
I am retired, so it's not like...
Okay, all right, so...
Madam Chair, who ended up on hospital?
Well, yeah, we need to go back to that, but what I, what I wanna look at is, we all have the assignments in front of us, right? So let's look at that and see, so on Linfield Generations, is that still, does that still need to be there?
It does.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay. Uptown does.
Anyone interested in that one?
Which is that?
The Linfield Generation. Well, it's an existing Subcommittee.
So it's, as I understand it, part of the agenda packet that you are going through, so it's in your agenda, not, not your, not this, the, yes.
Yeah, you probably have it in this. Do you know what the Linfield is?
I actually don't know.
Okay, so, Luke, do you wanna give a brief description of the Linfield Project, since it's been a while since that's kind of been before us? Just so everybody kinda knows.
I'm sorry.
Do you wanna give us a little brief description of the Linfield Project?
The Linfield Project is a Linfield School, and they own a large piece of property, it's contiguous to the school, but it's on the northern side of the school, it's vacant. It's had numerous iterations of projects in the past, but they have approached the city about potentially doing a residential development there. Previously, it was a, a senior development that they actually had approved, but that is no longer a viable project, so they're, they're interested in a residential project, and it's very low-resolution right now, nothing specific, but they, I think it would be good to keep this Subcommittee up.
Okay, so...
I'll do that.
And I can step off of that if...
Okay, well, I'll do it, whether it's you or Gary wants.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, we can give that, okay, so Bob, I'll put you on that. Does anybody else want that? You wanna do that? Okay, so we have Hegel and Solis on the Linfield Generations Project, which is not a generations, which is something else, but Linfield Project, right?
Yeah, we could change the name right now, just to Linfield, the Linfield Residential Project, probably more descriptive.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay. Uptown is Gary and I.
I'm good with that.
You good? Okay, Commercial Center, what is that again? I'm not even sure. Luke, is that the one over by Rancho California, that Commercial Center?
I think this actually covered two Commercial Centers, I think it was the Town, the Town Center Commercial, Town Center Commercial Center, which is where Target is, because we had a residential development. There's a residential overlay there, and we've had, we had, previously, we had a, a development proposal there. That's no longer valid, but we, we currently have another one.
So we still need that.
Right, and then I think it was also for the, the Commercial Center that was over Temecula Parkway, where the Starbucks is.
Oh.
It's, it's done now, that one's done, but we still have...
But we still need that.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay, so I am willing to step off that, if somebody wants to hop on. Okay, Hegel, what about you, Gary? You wanna stay on there?
If someone else is interested, I, I would give that one up.
Anybody?
If not, it...
Then you're good?
Yep.
Okay. And also, I wanted to say, since we're talking about the Target Center, I, it's so great, the gray that they're, that they've put up there, oh my gosh! That makes it look so much more classy. Hello, wow, that took a long time, anyway. Okay, general plan update.
Infill.
I would like to stay there. Oh, infill, sorry, I crossed out the wrong person. I would like to stay there. Do you, you wanna come off?
If anybody wants it.
Does anybody want that?
You guys are just full of volunteer-ism tonight.
What is infill?
All the vacancies.
I'm sorry, where are we right now?
We're on infill.
Infill.
Infill has to do with infill projects, so primarily in Uptown, but there are a few other infill sites within town that we get proposals on from time to time, and so it would be to evaluate those projects.
I'll do it if you want, sir. Gary, you want off?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll...
Okay, so on infill, we have, we have Turley Trejo and Hegel. On general plan update, we have Turley Trejo and Watts. Short-term, I would like to stay on.
Short-term rentals.
I'll jump on short-term.
Wanna jump on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Turley Trejo Ruiz on short-term rentals. Is that, is there anything coming up with that? Okay. All right. And Old Town, we're good there? Okay, Temecula Village, you guys good there? Okay, Hegel Ruiz, Municipal Code, good?
Yep.
Human Services, we haven't done anything there yet, that I know of, or at least I wasn't invited.
No.
Nope?
No, you know...
But we will. Or do we need it?
I, I'm not sure we need human serv, I mean...
We don't need to serve the humans!
Well, we have, we have other commissions for that. That's the TCSD Commission, honestly, I'm, I think that's a holdover from, from long ago, actually.
Okay, all right, so...
Cross it.
We got it. Okay. Winchester Hills Subcommittee, I am willing to come off of that, if anybody wants that.
I think before, this is the Winchester Hills Project that is in the county, that is a significant project.
I am not willing to come off of that.
Fifty-five thousand units.
This is that one?
I am not willing to come off of that.
Yeah, so this is a, a very significant Subcommittee.
Yeah, I will stay right there. Do you wanna stay?
Do you wanna stay on that, Bob?
Yep, that's fine.
I was like, I'll, I'll jump on that if you, if you don't want it, but if you want it, that's fine.
Roy Par Ranch, we have Ruiz and Watts.
Anyone else interested?
And we should probably change that to Somers Bend.
Somers.
I'll do it if you want off.
You interested in that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, take me off of that one?
Got you off. Somers Bend.
Can you clarify who'll do that one?
So Somers Bend is Ruiz and Hegel. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, Promenade Mall, so this is the one, we're back to that one. Okay, so we, oh, Solis, we have Solis on there. Okay, and then Altair, that's where we are, and we have Watts on there, Truax, we have Watts, and Turley Trejo, Town Square, Watts, Turley Trejo Housing.
It's gone.
Housie was scratched, right?
Did you decide we still needed the housing, or it's gone, right? Did we say it's gone?
Gone.
Housing's gone, yep.
Okay, so we cross that one out. Okay, then Butterfield-Temecula Parkway, we have LTT, or LTT, yeah, and Solis, and then, I'm gonna jump down to Sarafina, we have Hegel and Watts. And then hospitals, I'll tell you why I wanna be on there. I just really wanna be on there. I have a really good reason, but I'm not sure I can voice it, but I really, yeah, I really would like to be on there, I think we need to have a strong voice on there.
Chair, I suggest you use chair prerogative and just point yourself if you have another person.
Okay, I am gonna do that, sorry. And then, Adam, you go ahead. You're not on as many, how about you go ahead?
Yeah.
Is that good? Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was interested, but I know Bob was as well, so...
Yeah, I, I know hospitals were a little...
So you're nicer than I am, I just said, I'm gonna be on it.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys get all that?
No.
Really?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last little exchange between Bob Hegel and...
The last hospital. Hospital is Turley Trejo Ruiz.
Got it.
Okay, do we have all of them then? Are we good?
I think that's it.
All right, so it'd be great to have a new list, like, next meeting.
Yeah, we will.
Because it's a little messy, so that'd be awesome. Okay, any other, any other questions or comments, and you'll, Fernando, you'll get this, it's like, you're gonna be on it, you'll be great, and, and actually, you're not on very many, so you'll probably be kinda happy right now, so, but it's not, it's not too bad, it really isn't.
Do we need a motion for that list?
Do we? Even though it's under business?
I'm sorry.
Do we need a motion for the Subcommittee's?
You might as well, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, let's just do a motion confirming of the Subcommittee, yes.
Can I just move the, the list as discussed?
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Adam and a second from Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-zero, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, thanks for all of us getting along, so awesome. Okay, all right, so we're gonna move to the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the Commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues. You or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Commission Secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For a public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the Commission Secretary, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommissioner@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the Commission may file an appeal of the Commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Question, is this something I need to read, even if we don't have public comments?
If we don't have public comments, and, but there are people in the present, we generally do, just in case people want to add.
Okay, okay.
But if, if there's no one in the audience, then I think it's okay to, yes.
Which happens sometimes. Okay, all right, thanks for that clarification. Okay, we're gonna go to number five, planning application number PAO. So do we have any public comments? Wow, after I said that. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I should've done this at some point, right? I didn't do that.
So typically, we would do that per, per item, so when, after we call number five, we have the staff report, and then we open the public hearing.
And then we do, yeah, okay. Little review for me here, okay. So planning application number PA22-1101, an application to modify development plan to revise the timing threshold of a previously-approved condition of approval for a previously-approved multifamily housing project. The project is located on 28-580 Pujo Street, and Eric.
So, as you can...
Eric is not here.
As you can see, Eric is not here.
I'm looking at you going, this is not Eric!
So I am pinch hitting for Eric tonight, still is his project, but I will be doing the presentation.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott.
So, as you stated, this is planning application 221101, which is the Vine Creek COA revision. It's a modification request and a revision to a previously-approved condition of approval, or COA for Vine Creek. A revision requested to facilitate timing compliance with state requirements, and a previous batch of COA revisions was approved by the Planning Commission October 19th of last year. Project location, you can see here in red, is generally located approximately 130 feet north of the Main Street and Pujo, Pujo Street intersection on the east side of Pujo Street. So a little bit of background on Vine Creek, it was originally approved on February 20th of 2019. It was a development plan for affordable housing, there was a tentative parcel map, there was a minor exception for parking, and there was a certificate of historical appropriateness for the railroad turntable. This was the previously-approved site plan, that red outlines the building locations, the blue arrows are the vehicular access into the project site, these blue arrows are the pedestrian access into the project site, outlined here in blue are the amenities, and then the green box is the access onto the trail, the creek trail. The COA revision, the original condition of approval, which was number 43 for creek access, stated the project shall obtain all necessary approvals to provide pedestrian access for residents to the Marietta Creek Trail. The revised condition of approval, which will also be number 43 for creek access, will read, "Original condition of approval number 43 shall be revised to state, the project The project shall obtain all necessary approvals to provide pedestrian access for residents to the Marietta Creek Trail prior to the certificate of occupancy." So we're just moving the condition to certificate of occupancy. Terms of environmental, it is exempt from CEQA for section one-five-one-six-two for subsequent EIRs and Nego declarations. And subsequent ER was not needed since the conditions described in section one-five-one-six-two of CEQA do not exist. The applicant was unable to be here tonight. He did send in a letter to Eric that I'm going to read into the record. Dear Commissioners. My name is Darren Berberian. I am the Business Developer for Pacific West Communities Incorporated. I want to apologize for not being present tonight. I have come down with a very bad cold. Being that our project is one hundred percent affordable, we are under strict timelines on when we need to pull building permits in order to retain our financing. At which time our project was allocated financing from the state, we were only given six months to pull the permits or forfeit the project financing. This timing did not allow for the processing of this condition of approval. During this time, the Army Corps of Engineering had a freeze on plant submissions until late last year, which delayed processing. There are multiple agencies that we need to coordinate with, and moving this condition will allow us to do so thoughtfully. We are respectfully asking the city to consider moving this requirement to prior to condition of occupancy so that we have enough time to complete this task. We sincerely appreciate your consideration and look forward to bringing this much needed, much needed community to fruition. Thank you. Signed, Darren Berberian. With that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve this project based on the required findings and the condition of approval revision. That concludes mine and Eric's report. And I'm here for questions, and so are Luke and Stuart have a greater knowledge of the actual project.
Thank you, Scott, not Eric. Thank you. All right, any questions?
Yes.
Adam?
Just two quick questions. One, we've done a similar request before for these kind of financing timelines, right? Especially for the multifamily projects and affordable housing projects.
We did, we did this for this project previously.
It was the same one? Okay, that's what I thought. And the applicant's been cooperative in working with the city and getting everything else done?
It's been great.
Perfect. Thank you.
So what's changed between the last request and this request? Not quite sure why an additional time is being asked again. What happened?
For this one, it was, the previous one was a number of public works oriented, just moving the thresholds to occupancy. This was kind of one that they, I'll admit, since the developer's not here, he can't defend himself, but they kind of let this one slide through the cracks. You know, they probably should have started on this a while back. But for us, it's, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a big deal for us. If we push this to occupancy, the project cannot operate until they satisfy these conditions. We still have all the authority or leverage, if you will, to compel them to do this. They can't collect rents. I mean, so in all cooperation with them, and they are, it is a legitimate fact that if they don't hit their timelines for their TCAC financing, they're in jeopardy of losing it. And we certainly weren't going to hold them up over this to put that in jeopardy.
So was it, the delay was caused by the Army Corps of Engineers? Is that what?
It's just that the length of, once started, the length of process to acquire the approvals from the Corps would have not, they wouldn't have been able to make this threshold and get their financing. So they got, they've started the process, but it's going to be a while, as, you know, typically everything is with the Corps, before they'll get the approval. They just have to get it before they can occupy the buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions? And thanks for that explanation, Luke. Appreciate that. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm going to.
So we would.
Open that public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We have no requests to speak.
Okay, all right. I'm going to close that public hearing, and that was a long public hearing. That was awesome. And do we have a motion or do we have any discussion before we make a motion? Any discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Adam and a second by Gary to move item number five, Planning Application Number PA twenty-two dash eleven zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, on this next item, we're going to do number six and seven together.
Okay, awesome. Great. And thank you so much. I still will be needing those. Okay. All right. Item six and number seven, Planning Application Number PA two-two dash ten thirty-four. Development plan for the construction of approximately seventeen thousand one hundred and ten square foot industrial building located at twenty-seven, five sixty-two via Industria. And then item seven, Planning Application Number PA twenty-two dash ten thirty-five. Development plan for the construction of approximately twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square foot industrial building located at twenty-seven, five fifty via Industria. And the real Scott, will you please stand up?
Thank you again. These are my projects. As you stated, Planning Applications twenty-two, ten thirty-four, and twenty-two, ten thirty-five, MS Mountain View Buildings. So it's a project description, as you also stated, PA twenty-two, ten thirty-four. Development plan for the construction of an approximately seventeen thousand one hundred and ten square foot industrial building. And PA twenty-two, ten thirty-five. Development plan for the construction of an approximately twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square foot industrial building. Little bit of project background on these projects. So there's original parcel map that was recorded. Parcel map two-one-three-eight-two was recorded on January twelfth of nineteen ninety. The recorded parcel map contains sixty-one parcels along Avenue to Alvarado, Rio Nito, and Via Industria, including the parcels for these two buildings, fifteen and sixteen. So as you know, we've been going through these MS Mountain View Buildings for, this is our, getting into our fourth year of these buildings. So Phase One has been approved. Phase Two has been approved. Phase Three has been approved. Phase Four has been approved. Phase Five got approved in December of last year. And then this is building fifteen's location, and this is building sixteen's location. So this is Phase Six. The entire parcel map area has been previously reupgraded. Improvement plans, including streets and storm drain, were previously approved. The construction of Avenue to Alvarado and Via Industria is now complete. Little bit analysis, so both of the buildings are located in the LI, which is Light Industrial Zoning District. They meet the minimum parking requirements per the City of Temecula Development Code. They are consistent with the City of Temecula Design Guidelines for Industrial Buildings. They both provide an outdoor employee break area that includes tables with seats, umbrellas, and trash receptacles. And both buildings do have bike racks. So Building Fifteen, which is twenty-two, ten thirty-four, seen here on the screen, located at two-seven-five-six-two via Industria. Site plan is in front of you. The industrial building is on the top portion of the project site. The employee break area, and then enhanced paving as you enter the project site. These are the elevations. So, you know, as I've said with each one of these, all these colors are existing out there on other buildings that have already been built. And then the rendering of the building. Terms of landscaping. Total landscape on the project site is twenty-three percent, which does include African sumac, Texas ranger, fern pine, and creeping fig. Moving on to Building Sixteen, which is PA twenty-two, ten thirty-five. It's located at two-seven-five-five-oh via Industria. Again, the site plan, you have the building on the backside of the project, employee break area, and then again, the enhanced paving as you enter. The elevation on this one, very similar, except this time it is the blue. And the rendering showing the corner. The landscaping on this project is twenty-eight percent, and we have some Mediterranean cypress, Palo Verde, creeping fig again, and Mexican honeysuckle. Terms of environmental, it is CEQA exempt for section one-five-three-three-two, which is a class thirty-two for infill developments. And with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA twenty-two, ten thirty-four and PA twenty-two, ten thirty-five, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my report. I'm here for questions. The applicant's representative, who is also the engineer, is here for questions as well.
We have any questions for Scott? Anybody? Do you have a question?
Is there any reason why the, all the buildings, like, look the same, even though this is like a different site? That's probably one of my questions. And then the other question is, there's the landscaping. If it's kind of a modern building, I think it should have more of a modern landscape.
Okay. Questions for, those questions for you, Scott?
In terms of the landscaping, the City of Temecula Development Code has a plant landscaping palette that they can choose from. So typically, as long as they are choosing landscaping from that palette, and our landscape consultant reviews and agrees with their choices, that is how the landscape gets chosen. In terms of the, the architect's obviously not here. In terms of the architecture, if you look at other industrial building sites complexes, a lot of the buildings do look very similar. It's all done by the same developer, the same builder, just with the different color and accents on the building. So in total, I believe we have approved fourteen buildings, maybe? Fourteen or fifteen? And we still have another three, four, or five. I think the developers are still trying to decide. So at the end of the day, it will have one cohesive-looking industrial park.
Have one more question, too. There's like a big difference in grade. And then when I drove over there, I noticed that there's like a twenty-foot, you know, it's in a grade. So is the grading that they've done, is that the final finished floor that they're going to do? Or there's going to be some other type of grading to kind of go with the elevation of the street?
Yeah, so they did the, they did the initial mass grading years ago, and now, well, they're coming back in, they'll do the precise grading. So as you see those unfinished pads out there, they'll generally be at that finished floor height.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Are you good?
I think that's it, yeah.
Okay. Questions? Okay, seeing no questions, and, well, I'll save that for discussion. If we can have the applicant come on in?
And if we can open them.
Then I'm going to open it. Yeah, I got that right in my hand. Open that public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening. Steve Summers with SDH Associates. We're the engineering consultant. We are in agreement with all the conditions of approval. As an aside, I'd like to say that we work in many, many cities across Southern California, most, as a matter of fact. We do millions of square feet of these a year and other type projects. I do live in Temecula, so I am somewhat biased. The best commission, the best council, and absolutely the best staff, hands down. And I truly sincerely mean that. We would do every project here if we could. It's just professional. It's the way it ought to be done. And there's so much respect and old-school integrity. I've had to call Ron and say, Ron, we have a problem. I've had to call Scott and do the same. How would you guys like to deal with this? We talk about it. We come to a solution. We keep our word. They keep their word. At the end of the day, the client's happy as a clam, because cities don't keep their word anymore. And I actually had director of an engineering department in a local city tell me, well, those are the conditions of approval. That doesn't mean that we have to adhere to them. I said, wait. Don't I need to adhere to them? He said, well, of course you do. I said, so that's a contract. You made my client sign those conditions of approval. That's contract. You can't just change your mind because he has developed this project based upon these conditions of approval. That's how far integrity has gone away in this industry of professionals. So I just want to say thank you to the staff. I don't usually come to these as the owner of the company, but we do, we employ almost all Temecula people. We moved down here recently. Bob Morris, who did the Old Town and the arches, is my uncle. We have deep, long ties in the city, and we're very proud to be here. We're very proud of what you guys do and being part of the city. So I just wanted to say heartfelt thanks to you guys. I've never had a chance to do that.
Thank you. Tell me your name again.
Steve Summers.
Steve Summers, that's right. Thank you so much. And we appreciate our staff so much. So we appreciate hearing that from an applicant, and we hear that a lot. But we appreciate and completely honor the integrity that's here and realize how important that is.
That's great. I'm glad you recognize it.
We do, and we're.
And if I can answer any questions about the project, I'm very happy to. I think you guys are familiar with it. I think his staff reports are always spot on and.
Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question, but I have a quick comment. Bob was instrumental in our arches, correct, in Old Town?
Yeah, he actually, he designed those at his house on the hill.
I remember him coming, attending a lot of our Old Town Local Review Board meetings.
And started the tractor races.
Yeah.
I still have a sticker on one of my old trucks for the tractor races. We still have the old sod buster. Yeah, we're very proud of our history in the city.
And just finally, thank you for your kind words. We feel the same way about staff, and we feel the same way about people that come, such as yourself and applicants, and provide that. It's nice to hear that coming from you. We really appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Any, did you have a comment or question?
So this is, we're going to, this is the time that I can ask the applicant a question?
Yes, yes.
I think I asked the wrong question. I think I wanted to ask the applicant.
That's all right.
Is there, is there any possibility of a different change of, maybe a little bit different type of, not completely different, just minor change so the building doesn't look exactly the same as down the street? As there's a difference in, you know, we're a different street now, at a different elevation. There's a big difference in grade, over twenty feet.
Here's the rationale behind. I will say the difference in grade is what makes this project unique. Most industrial parks are flat, very, very flat. Hence the reason this industrial park's set for thirty years, Ron? With no, it was graded pads for thirty years. It took someone with the moxie of Moshe Salagi to come down, purchase this thing cash, and build it, and keep, and go beyond every promise he's made to the city. And that's a tough project to do, and everybody was scared of it. And we knew we could do it. We knew it took somebody like Moshe to put up the money to do it. But you have a really unique park. You have something you probably only see in parts of San Diego, San Clemente, where you have a beautiful industrial park that actually does have some elevation, so it's not just a wall of concrete. The reason the buildings look the same is that it's, these are usually termed industrial parks. And when you sell something like this, it is industrial park, it is, there's an association that takes care of everything. And just like on Via Industria, where I own a building adjacent to this, we're in a park. And so there's kind of a cohesiveness, and there's a value to everyone having their properties similar, well-kept, in an association where everything is kept at a very high level of maintenance. So the idea here is it's a park. These kind of, although they're all individually owned, it is kind of a cohesive idea. If the city doesn't want that, certainly, then they should tell the developer and the architect, and they can begin to look at something different. But the idea behind it, I'm not saying it's, you're wrong in your thought, in your thinking, I'm saying the idea behind it is it's an office park. I drive up there all the time, two, three times a day, depending on how many times I'm back and forth to the office. It makes me crazy that none of those buildings match. So it's just beauties in the eye of the beholder, I guess.
Yep.
Does that help at all? So a lot of those buildings were built over several decades, and the quality and the difference between those buildings is significant.
So each building, each property is different, right? So it's not, it's not a, I mean, in theory, it's an industrial park because they all look the same, but one parcel can be sold and the other parcel can be sold separately.
Each one of those buildings sits on its own parcel. Which is again, unique. Usually, like where my building is, I own the footprint, but I don't own anything else. These folks actually own their lot, own their parking, own, you know, it's a pretty unique project, which is also why it's been so popular.
Yeah. I would, my thought process is that I understand your concept of an industrial park. And what I'm probably just, I was kind of just asking, because I want to also maybe understand what my fellow commissioners would maybe be open-minded to, if there was maybe just some changes. I'm not saying completely change everything. I'm just saying maybe just, maybe the portion, the main entrance, or?
I think the main entrance to a particular building or to the area?
Well, there's two buildings, right? We have two buildings in front of us today for review.
Two of?
There's two different sites. It's a little confusing because there's two different sites, and there's just one open here for two different properties. But both of the buildings look the same. Is there any possibility where you can maybe just design it, just the entrance maybe a little bit different? Is that something that?
I think that the Planning Department can relate to the owner what they might want different in future phases, and he'll certainly, you know. what they might want different in future phases, and he'll certainly, you know, work with them. There's, there's obviously, I don't know exactly what you mean by entrance. I don't know if you mean monument, or signage, or things like that. But those are all things that are, have to be done under the guise of what the planning department allows. And with respect to the buildings themselves, they, they vary in color, they vary in where they pop out, and how much they pop out, and various materials, while still being somewhat cohesive. I remember in an earlier planning commission, the chairperson had said something about one of the colors, and that was taken to heart, and it was, you know, really brought into the project. Okay, this is a color that was or was not popular, the city does or does not want to see. So certainly, they're listening to you, and they want to please the commission and, and the staff.
So I think, I think that's my comment. My comment is, um, I would- Oh, this is time for question?
Yeah, this is time for questions for the applicant.
And I think that was it. I think that was the main, the main thing, and also the grading, which is, thank you.
Okay. So no other questions for the applicant?
I just, just have a comment. I just wanted to thank you for your words about integrity. I think there's a lot of other government agencies across the country that should hear those, those words, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, are there any public speakers, public comments?
We have received none.
Okay, I'm gonna close that public hearing. That's kind of fun. Okay, got it? All right, so we're gonna go to discussion, and one thing I want to say, Fernando, is I think I kind of, I understand where you're coming from. I kind of originally had that same thought, like, you know, we want it. But as we went out there, we went out there in October, was it, as a field trip, and looking at those buildings, and I honestly was so impressed with how it turned out. Like, you know, we're, we're voting on this in phases, but, you know, when they first started coming to us, I felt the same way, like, oh, you know, they all kind of look alike, and we kind of talked about the colors. But as we went out there, it was like, wow, this is, this looks really amazing. And I had, you know, my reservations on it also, so that's kind of where I'm coming from, as far as what it looks like now, like what the, what the product has shown us. And we've, you know, as a commission, have been happy with how it has turned out, especially when we went out and looked at it, and it's like, wow. And, you know, that's why I always ask for these, these- Material boards. That's the word I wanted, because it's hard, you know, on an email, or, you know, to really know what that looks like. And that really is what it looks like, and the, and the different colors that they have out there in the buildings, set them apart too, and actually complement each other. So I, yeah, I mean, I'm not, that's not my kind of building, but I really, I like, and I, how you explain that too, as an industrial park, so that's kind of what we have felt. Would you all agree with me, or?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I, I don't think it's appropriate to ask for any changes at this, this stage of the game. I think for future ones, that, that may be something they should, they should take a look at. But to be honest with you, these buildings, I think what gives them a very unique look is the elevation changes, which I've, you go down into some parts of San Diego, and you just see miles of flat, flat roof. The other thing is that the, that our, our industrial area is not really in view of our housing areas, so it doesn't impact us from that point of view. I owned a building like that in Murrieta. I worked in it for twenty years, was very happy to work in it. Didn't really make a whole lot of difference how it looked. The functioning of the building was extremely important to me. The maintenance of the building was very important to me, and the ability for my customers to find me was important. But I don't have the same eye that, that you have, Fernando. You, you have an architect's eye, and, you know, I believe you're, you're, you will see things that none of us will, will see, which is good. I think that really adds to, to, to this commission. But I would, I would say we should look at this project as it, as it sits.
No, and, and I would agree with that, and thank you, thank you for those comments, because I think timing is important. You know, this was maybe building one and two of twenty or something, but, you know, we're, we're so far along. And it is definitely different driving out there and spending the time, you know, I mean, even just walking was different than driving by it, and the elevation is definitely unique, like, like you mentioned. And I know when we, when we did take that field trip, it was like, you kind of look around and go, wow, this is, this is a pretty nice industrial park, and I think it kind of fits in with what we're looking. If there are a future project, I would agree with that. Maybe that's something, because you do have a different eye, Commissioner Solis, of, of seeing some of that. I just think at this point in the game, and the amount of buildings that have already been approved and developed, it, I, I do like that they're, it, it kind of fits the mold. If we changed something now, it'd almost look like it wouldn't fit in.
Any other comments?
In a completely different vein, you had mentioned to me earlier tonight that we missed our old colleague, Ron Garrio, who always had an interest in the landscaping of the projects. And as it was detailed to us now, I'm not an expert on plants or anything. I know a few. I may not remember from college taking a plant taxonomy class. But I will say that Palo Verde is beautiful tree, beautiful green tree with yellow blossoms. And if you want to see one, if you're not familiar with it, right in front of the Panera in the parking lot, is, is a Palo Verde tree. That's just an excellent example of one. So anyhow, that's just a, a quick comment in honor of our, our departed colleague, Mr. Garrio, who we learned a lot from and appreciated all his service over the years.
All right. Any other comments before we make a motion? Nope. All right. Do I have a motion?
Do you want a motion for the items together?
Yes.
Okay, then I would move items number six, plan application number PA twenty-two dash one zero three four, and item number seven, plan application PA twenty-two ten zero, one zero three five.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ruiz, and a second by Commissioner Hagel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, thank you, Mr. Summers. Bye. Okay, we're gonna move on to commissioner reports, and I'll, I'll start on this end. We're doing good.
And I sat over there, we always started over there, I sat over here, we started over here, it's a, maybe it's a new thing.
You just have that face.
Yeah. Just a couple of quick things. I mean, it feels good to be back. I feel like I haven't been around for a while, and it's like, wow, we were so busy, so busy, and then the time away is like, man, I miss this family, I miss, I miss coming over here. So it's good to be back. Commissioner Solis, welcome. Look forward to, to your insight and experience here. Now Commissioner Watts, thank you so much for your, for your time as chair. You know, coming, coming in and learning a ton from you, and senior leadership is, is definitely appreciated. And then congratulations, Chair Charlie Trejo and Vice Chair Hagel. You guys have some shoes to fill, but I'm sure you'll do great. Thank you.
So I'd like to, again, welcome Commissioner Solis. I think we really do appreciate the knowledge that you bring and a whole different look to this commission. So it's, it's really appreciated, and I hope you continue to, to share particularly all the education I'm sure you worked very hard for, to keep sharing that with us, since we don't have that, so. And Gary, thank you for getting us through last year. It was, it was an interesting year. I know it was the first, first year for both of us, and we appreciate the leadership that you, that you offered, and we look forward to the year you're gonna bring us.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah.
Colorful.
Yeah.
Okay, same thing, my colleagues. I want to express welcome to you, Fernando. But also, I want to apologize, because before the meeting, I said I wanted to give you a chance to sort of give us just a quick thumbnail of your experience and background, and I never gave you that chance. So maybe if you want to share that with us, I would make that request, but that's my only comment, so.
Okay, well, thank you. I just want to thank everyone's staff. Everyone's been extremely friendly. And I, I'm really excited. I've, my wife and I, we've lived here for about four years, so when we got married, we decided to move here. We bought a home, and we've been here for about four years. I'm originally from LA. I went to school Cal Poly Pomona for a ca, for urban planning, and then I got my masters from Cal State Northridge. And for the past, for the past eight years, I've had my practice. So I do architecture, engineering, and consulting. We've done, when I first started, I would start doing homes. And throughout the years, we do industrial buildings, restaurants, custom homes. So that's what I've been doing recently for the past seven, eight years. And then also during that time, since I had a lot of, I, I had time, so I had a business, and then I worked for cities. So I worked for the City of LA as a planner, City of Almani, Beverly Hills, and County of Riverside. So I have a couple of years also experience in cities and municipalities. But I feel with all, with some of the experience that I had, I wanted to be a part of my community and, and actually have maybe a little bit of input on, on this. I see as Temecula's brand new, and it just keeps getting better and better, so I just wanted to be a part of that. And that, that's why it made me so interested in, in the planning commission. And I'm pretty excited to be here, so thank you for everyone being so friendly and welcoming, and that's it. Thank you.
Hopefully you kept some of your contacts at, at the county, so.
Yeah, I, I actually, I, I do. I have a lot of friends that still work there. And it's, it's a small world. When you do planning, and you do architecture, it's a very small world.
So, thanks for sharing that with us. I also wanted, and I don't know if John's listening, but I wanted to thank John Tullisio for serving for twenty-plus years on this commission. And when I came onto the commission, there were four other men, and he was one of them, who'd been on there a very long time. And I really appreciated his knowledge and wisdom as he served on the commission, and we miss him. So we wish him well, and, and his wife, and hope that he knows that we appreciate him. So I wanted to say that, and I think as far as anything else, that was it. So any subcommittee reports that we've had? No? Okay, you're on, Mr. Luke.
Mr. Immediate Past Chair Watts. I feel, I feel like you were the chair for like three years. I don't, I don't know, you know, the COVID years, they get all weird, but I felt like you were the chair for, forever, so. And if you thought you were getting out of here without another gavel, you thought wrong. So I, this isn't your first, but, you know, what can we say? We appreciated your leadership. Staff is very grateful for, for your, your time as chair, and then, you know, times before that too, so, you know. And we look forward to Commissioner Chairwoman Trejo's year upcoming. But just wanted to let you know that we really appreciated you, and, and it was, it was a good time. It was more than a year. Like I said, it seemed like a lot longer than that, and we went through a lot during that time, so really appreciate it. And I would like to present this to you on behalf of the commission as well as staff. And again, to Chair, Chairwoman Trejo and Vice Chair, we are looking forward to a very busy year coming up. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have the hospital before you in about two months, and that is a very, I mean, they don't get much bigger. Maybe the mall was bigger, but that's, that's coming before you. We have the general plan update that we're going through, a lot of stuff that's gonna come before you regarding that at the subcommittee level, but also here at this, at this body. We won't get to the, you know, actual approval hearings for the general plan for some time, but there's gonna be a lot of studies that need to come before this body, a lot of other decisions that need to be made. So looking forward to your leadership this year as we navigate, you know, the, a so important general plan, so. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Well, we appreciate you, and I know that from experience that, like I said, if you have any questions, Luke is a great resource, any of us here. Okay, Public Works, Ron?
Yes, we've had a few questions regarding, from the commissioners regarding our overlay slurry and ARAM projects that are going around through the city. If you notice, they're quite delayed, and that's due to the unseat, well, it's been a lot colder in January than it has been in recent years, so we haven't been able to do any of our asphalt, any of the binders or anything, so it just won't stick. So I know that there's some residents that are a little bit unhappy that it's taken so long, but we'll finish them up as soon as the weather changes a little bit. That's in the Paloma del Sol area, and the Meadowview, and a little bit in Red Hawk. And then some of staff was able to attend the kind of a opening today of heirloom farms out at Funes. And we were able to tour the model homes, but in case you would like to go during the weekend, they're having a bigger public grand opening this Saturday. And so we were able to take a look at some of those models and, you know, see how the community is shaping up, and that was something that you guys approved here not long ago. And then lastly, from the Public Works Department, we definitely hope to see you all at our grand opening, our kicking off of the French Valley Phase Two interchange. That's our biggest project ever in the city, you know. It's a seventy-five million dollar project. It's going to add the, the overpass, or the, you know, the, the flyover, as well as some CD lanes, some collector distributors. And so that's February fourteenth, right before our next meeting. February fourteenth at eleven AM at the end of Date Street, and we expect a lot of people.
Yeah. I would hope that you all can make it. I think that would be very important for you to be there, if at all possible.
Yeah, just a question. I'm not sure Luke or, or Ron, whether either of you can answer this, but there was a gentleman here at our meeting, a couple of meetings ago, from one of the car dealers regarding problems they were having. I think, I don't know it was actually which development it was, but is, I was just curious if any of that's been resolved or not.
We stepped, we had our inspector step up with the maintenance, it was kind of, the problem is, it was kind of a perfect storm, no pun intended, regarding what was happening at that time. We had the rain events, we had our city slurry project that was going on on Yunes, and then we also had upgrades to the ramps due to that project. And it, it just created a lot of angst from Mercedes. And so we just stepped up, having the contractor communicate, get the road clear. They still have not finished Temecula Center Drive, but it is a condition of development. So we're putting as much pressure as we can, but I don't know if Luke has, but I haven't heard from Garth lately.
No, yeah, I haven't heard from Garth, but, you know, just coincidentally, one of the big concerns they had was the condition of that road out in front of Mercedes at that time. And there was some work going on, and the work's still going on, but the condition of the road that they were concerned with has actually been, the, the construction has progressed where that's not an issue, as well as they were concerned about basically little rocks from the roadwork, little gravel and things like that that were hitting the cars. I was actually out there today, and there was a street sweeper that was just street sweeping just that street. So I think that the developer is taking to heart that they need to keep that roadway clear and serviceable for Mercedes-Benz, and we haven't heard from Garth or, or Ken Rosenthal, who I actually think was here.
Yes, he was.
You know, since that time.
Good, okay. Yeah, I was, I actually saw the street sweeper on that road cleaning, and it was, there wasn't a lot on, on that road.
It's, it's not perfect. I, I drove, there's still some gravel on there, but, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're working on it, and it, it seems to be going well.
The road north of there had a dump truck sitting in the middle of it, and the road was all taken up on the other side. So I was noticing it was very hard for anybody to pass that dump truck, and it was a lot of cement trucks going in and out of there too. So it was, that road was, was really, really tough to, to drive today.
Yeah, and it will be, and just until that, that section's complete.
Any other questions for Ron? Oh, I do have a question. So the CRC pool, when is that gonna be opened? Yeah.
I think Luke would know the answer to that one better.
September.
What?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
That, that's the latest. We're, we're, we're struggling to acquire some infrastructure-type electrical equipment, a switchgear. a switchgear for that facility. So I, and don't put that in, you know, in stone just yet, but I want to set the expectation that we're, we're having trouble acquiring that that switchgear, which, you know, is is responsible for...
Is that the heater?
No, it's to power the whole building. I mean, that's part of the electrical connection and equipment that goes along with it.
So the CRC itself is not going to open again until September or the, just the pool?
The the whole facility.
The whole facility. Oh, that's depressing news.
Yeah, no, we were working on getting it open, you know, before summer, before the summer season. And it's, it's not just as simple as the switchgear. It's, the uncertainty of the switchgear cascades backwards into hiring of lifeguards and staff, many of which are, most of which are seasonal. So they're not already staff members. We hire them for the season and if we can't guarantee them work. I mean, so this, it it has a lot of complexity on on the labor force side. So we're still working on it. I know that Public Works is is looking into alternatives. And I I'm hopeful that we can figure that out, but as of right now, I I think we need to set the expectation of September.
Wow, okay. Okay, I wasn't expecting that. Okay. And then I noticed at the city council meeting that they approved a forty mile per hour change on Pachanga. So I worried about that.
Yeah, well, you know, the speed survey came out to be what it was. And, you know, according to new legislation, we have the ability to go up or down five miles per hour. And when those speeds came back, they were significantly lower than the last time we did our speed survey. So we're not sure if that was because of...
Traffic.
Traffic, you know.
Traffic.
That's probably what it is. And so
Traffic.
We went ahead and did that and moved it down to where the speed survey indicated. And we're going to put out message boards, making sure people are aware of the change, but then we will monitor it. And if we have to come back and do another speed survey, if something's done, that significantly changes the character of the road, then we'll go ahead and do the next speed survey and we'll see if we need to raise it, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, considering that it did come out that way and it's always better to go down than up, you know.
Just a six-lane highway, really. So it's, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, the characteristics of it too, being that it's by a school, you know, we have Great Oak there. We've got some restaurants that are coming in now and for some reason, the the speeds have gone down.
And just a, it, when I was first introduced to how speed limits were, you know, established, it was a little counterintuitive to me. But, you know, these, these speed surveys are required, I think, every seven to eight years, so required by law. You can do them more often, but you have to at least do them. So that's, that's kind of the circumstance here. And then the survey produces results and you are bound by law to honor what the survey produces. So I know there's some concern about going down to forty and I get it intuitively. I think everybody does. But, you know, just, just, just a, you know, food for thought that that this is required, this is a requirement of law that we're, that we're recognizing that forty miles an hour on that stretch of road.
Yeah.
And I'll add this. We do get a lot of records requests for speed surveys. So everybody that wants to fight a ticket checks the speed survey to see if we did not lower it or we did not put it up according to the latest speed survey. So we can't, just as Luke's mentioning, we can't ignore it because then it becomes unenforceable for the officers.
No, I understand all that. I, yeah, just, I feel like there needs to be some kind of messaging out there because immediately people are like, oh, they just want to be able to give tickets, right? Because it's just, it's just a, I drive that road every day and I'm like, today I was like, oh, wow. Oh, wow. It's, it's, I mean, when there's traffic, of course, you're going forty fi- forty miles an hour. But if there isn't, it's, it feels very slow, but...
We will notice the public through message boards and through social media. And then the sheriff's department is aware that there's a change, so they're not going to just jump on people. We've already had that discussion at Traffic Commission.
Okay. Okay, all right.
As I like to say, we set the traffic, we set the speed limits, so it's the citizens who said it.
Yeah, okay.
The drivers.
Yeah, okay. All right. So anything else anybody wants to say before we adjourn? No? All right. So our next regular meeting of the planning commission will be on Wednesday, February fifteenth at ten AM. Right here, city council chambers. Correct? Correct.
Yes, except it's a special meeting because it's at ten AM rather than our usual six PM time.
Special meeting from ten to two are the hours we've been given. Is that...
I would say it starts at ten and it will end when it ends, I guess, yeah.
Okay, all right. Ten AM.
Is there a regular meeting that night also?
No, that's the only meeting that day.
Okay, thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned.